The members are still in the executive session meeting. Once this, once they're through with that meeting, this meeting will start. Nicole, you have a question? Hello?
Mike, it's Tanya. Can you hear me?
I can.
Is there a way to turn my camera off?
Yeah, I'm working through. There's a ton of people in here. So as they come in.
Okay, that's perfect. All right, I'll look for the little, the little sign will come up, the little symbol.
To turn the camera off, it will shut it off on this side of it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mike.
It looks like a couple of people have their hands up. I can answer a couple of questions. Why I'm bringing people in.
Hi, Mike. It's Crystal Burgantin. Can you hear me?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Just to clarify, I'm wondering how you're going to handle public comment. Is it going to be by raise hand, lower hand?
Yes, yep. So the chair will ask everybody to raise their hand or lower their hand will will announce that you can star six yourself because some things we can unmute for everybody, but depending on what people have for a client on their machine, we can't. So we'll ask them that they can use star six to mute or unmute as well as if they're calling in from a phone to do star nine to raise your hand. Or if you're on the computer, you can just use the raise the hand option.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Ah, yes.
Any way that we'll know how many people are in the meeting?
We can ask. We've got 254 right now.
Okay, I was gonna ask on the record, but like
Yeah, yeah.
More curiosity.
That question, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Liz McDonald. I was just had a quick question for you. So there is a group of physical educators that have prepared little presentation during public comment. And we weren't sure if you would be able to put us in sequential order so that the presentation went smooth and the meeting went smoother rather than just raising our hands and having to kind of chime in.
Sequential order in?
So there's six of us that are speaking and we would prefer to be able to speak in a particular order if that's possible.
Yeah, if you want to share the presentation with me.
It's we're just speaking.
Oh, okay.
Well, slideshow or anything like that. We're just speaking, but it would be best if we spoke in order if that's possible to do. So we didn't know if you'd be able to, if I could. I can even just email you the names. And just when we raise our hands, if you could just call on us in order if that's possible or put us in an order.
Yeah. So if if you want to do that when a public comment comes and you just make that comment to the chair at that time when you go to do it. You'll be able to unmute yourselves to do. We just, we just asked that people, you know, don't unmute yourself and speak. Similar to if you were at a regular meeting. So the only people sometimes we can't unmute them depending on the client I was talking about earlier. So if you do have anything like that, when you go to do it, you raise your hand, then we'll sort through that list and then we'll be able to make sure if you, if there is any problems, as long as everybody has their name and you send that name, I can, you know, try to address them as they come up if they, if we have a problem.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. This is Paul Dibartica, chairman of the school committee. It's going to take a few minutes to to get everyone signed into the Zoom meeting here. We don't want to shut anyone off. I believe they all have to be added individually. So if you would just be with us while we're working on that with our IT department so that everyone that wants to be a part of this meeting tonight could be heard. Thank you. Mr. Chandler, are you ready yet?
The people can't speak yet. Do you have all your members of the committee here right now?
Mr. Collins is here. Mrs. Barnado is here. Mrs. Freeman is here. Is Mr. Fiorello present? I see Mr. Salvatore.
The chair is here.
Yep, there he is here. Hold on. Let's get him over on that side.
This is Mr. Fiorello, are you here?
I am now.
Mrs. Waters, are you here?
Let's see. I do not see Heidi. I do not see her in the list.
Heidi says she is. She texted me.
Okay.
I think she's waiting to be let in, maybe.
She's waiting for Mike.
I don't have her name. I don't know what, maybe she renamed or joined with a different name.
She's raising her hand.
All right.
Almost set, Mike?
Almost.
We're trying to find her.
Trying to find Heidi.
She said it might say Jeff or Charlotte.
Oh, I think it said Charlotte last time.
Charlotte W.
Charlotte W, yes.
Oh, that's why I couldn't find her. We have a lot of people. I'm still trying to get in, so.
Okay, great. She says she's on. So before we start the meeting for the school committee members, there's a lot of people on and the screens jump around. So if you're gonna say something, please say it out loud for me, please. So you know, in regards to motions and if you want to speak on an individual item. Okay. So, all right, we're gonna call the meeting for the Cumberland School Committee for Thursday, May 28, 2020 at 7:20 PM. In accordance with the Governor Armando's Executive Order 20-34 dated May 15, 2020, extension of various executive orders including 20-25 dated April 15, 2020, the Cumberland School Committee intends to conduct this meeting remotely. Public can participate in this meeting remotely, but not in person by calling area code 301 715-8592 and the webinar ID is 994 5474-8346. Or you can join us on Zoom by going to the town website. I'm sorry, to the school department website in our events calendar and you'll find the link for Zoom. And that password is 049988. So we got a couple of items to go through. First, we're gonna have the high school band is gonna join us tonight right after the Pledge of Allegiance for the National Anthem. And I would like to say to the public a few months back, the school committee approved a three minute, no, three minute time limit for public comment. And I know the union's gonna be, be speaking tonight, so we will not hold the union admin, admin to the three minutes. But if there's any comments being made that are directed to people directly, they will not be tolerated and you will be muted out immediately. We'll ask you once again if you'd like to speak, but keep the personal attacks out of this meeting. Keep it professional. So with that said, I'd like to start everyone off with the Pledge of Allegiance and you can sit in your chairs to do this, which is fine. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So item number three here, approval of the agenda. Compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 20-34 dated May 15, 2020. Discussion slash vote on whether there's public access to the meeting through adequate, I believe there is since a lot of people on, so I need approval of the agenda, please, by someone.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it. Please note for the record that all seven members of the Cumberland School Committee are in attendance tonight. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting on May 14, 2020. Number two, special meeting, May 21, 2020. B, approval of minutes from the executive session from 5:14, 2020. And the executive session from 5:21, 2020. I need a motion to approve on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero. Next, the report out of the executive session, report out of executive session meeting on 5:28, 2020. Report out, there were no votes taken tonight during executive session. And one item was removed from the agenda altogether. And that was item number two. Discussion of certified layoff recommendations. That was removed. There was no discussion tonight about that. I need a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Don't move.
By Mr. Collins, second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it seven to zero. Next is the superintendent's report, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, everyone. The first thing that I would like to do is take just a minute or two to recognize the all state athletes of Cumberland High School. We've had a number of students recognized for their outstanding athletic ability. We've had a several students make the second all state team and we've had actually several students make the first team, all state team. And unfortunately, as you all know, the spring season did not take place, but regardless of that, we have a number of students who have been identified as some of the best in the state. And we just want to let those spring athletes know that we're, we feel very badly that they did not have an opportunity to compete this spring. And we know that you know, sports is something that they love and enjoy and look forward to. And unfortunately, that was taken away from them because of the coronavirus. So I'd like to just very quickly mention the names of these athletes. Let me start first with the second team all state athletes. Ethan Carpenter in cross country. He's a sophomore. Henry Denon, cross country. He too is a sophomore. Corbin Diaz, wrestling, a senior. Shane Mirbot, football, a senior. Madison Zinkan, basketball, a junior. Owen Perrin, ice hockey, senior. Noah Kel, indoor track, senior. Trey Maraca, indoor track, senior. Grace Carr, indoor track, ninth grade. Shakira DePina, indoor track, senior, senior. Emma Peterson, indoor track, grade nine. Elizabeth Pickren, indoor track, grade 11. Nicolette Ducharme, indoor track, grade 11. Colby Riley, wrestling, senior. Tyler Shaw, wrestling, senior. Those are all of the second team all state athletes. And here are the first team all state athletes. Olivia Belt, cross country, junior. Caroline Shen, swimming, senior. Brady Gillis, wrestling, senior. Mason Lynch, wrestling, senior. Aiden Ferrier, wrestling, junior. Jake Reed, soccer, senior. Abigail Free, soccer, senior. Ian Horsecamp, vinegar, swimming, senior. And Juliette Vemer, soccer, junior. Congratulations to all of Cumberland High School students who earned the distinction of being first and second all state in their respective sports, which makes them some of the best athletes in the state. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Coach Colin Smith. Colin is the coach of the Cumberland High School wrestling team. And Colin has been chosen as the coach of the year for winter sports. So congratulations to you, Colin, for carrying on the great tradition of wrestling at Cumberland High School. So congratulations to all of those athletes for their success. The next thing that I, I wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, is the online student registration. We know that parents are anxiously awaiting especially to register their kindergarteners for the upcoming school year. As you all know, we generally have an in-person registration, but due to COVID-19 and the fact that we all have to do social distancing, our usual process for registering our students, which is an in-person registration process, we've had to take another route and we have decided to add an online electronic registration through Aspen. And I believe that like we're just about ready to go. In fact, it might even be ready to go tomorrow, but certainly we're expecting that parents will be able to start registering their kindergarteners next week sometime. And, and just so that everybody knows, the online registration is not just for kindergarteners, all online. All registrations now will be online. So just wanted to let everybody know that that is moving along and, and parents should have that opportunity if not by tomorrow, certainly by the beginning of next week. The next thing I'd like to discuss, Mr. Chairman, is the planning, future planning for the coronavirus. As you all know, we are in a fluid situation. And it seems like things are changing almost daily. I want everybody to know that we are, we have been talking about what the start of the next school year will be like. In fact, some of the decisions that we have to make tonight are based on those decisions and the information that we have at this time, which by the way, we don't have all of the information that we need to make an informed decision. But we have established a task force that will begin formally meeting next week. And I think it's important for everyone to know that, you know, we, I think everyone would agree that we have a responsibility to follow CDC guidelines. And by the way, I should also mention that we, we are ensuring that all of our constituents are represented. We need to have medical representatives. We need to have facility representatives. We had to have school administration, central office administration. So there are lots and lots of people involved in this process. As I mentioned, we will be following CDC guidelines and it's important for everyone to know that to know that, you know, the budget that we have submitted to the school committee and was approved two weeks ago, it included, the budget was based on the way that we normally run a school system. It was not based on what might happen, the new normal, as we all know, based on all of the uncertainties related to COVID-19 and the coronavirus. One thing that we know for sure, that we're going to have to be doing, is social distancing. So we will be contemplating several different options, and funding is a huge part of that. So one of the challenges for us is to try to anticipate what any additional costs may be going into the next school year, and again, that's one of the reasons why we're in the position that we're in. And just to let everybody know, and I know there are lots of people on this Zoom and in this meeting, we have had to try to respond to a $5 million budget gap, so we were already in a very difficult situation. And with the state now approaching a $1 billion budget gap, there is a belief on the part of a lot of people, and including the governor, and I'm sure she, some of you may have heard her in her conference today, that lots of positions are going to be impacted as a result of this $1 billion budget gap. So given the fact that we have developed the budget based on 100% school capacity and the way that we always do business, there are going to be costs that we cannot anticipate. And one of the biggest challenges that we face, and one of the reasons why we're in the position that we're in right now, is because there is a June 1 deadline for noticing any employees due to, for budget reasons. And part of the problem is that this June 1 budget deadline was not extended. The governor had initially proposed, because everything else is getting pushed back because of a lack of revenue due to all of the businesses in the state being closed down, the governor was proposing that the June 1 deadline for noticing people for budget reasons would be pushed back till at least July 1, and that would have given us a chance to at least consider all of the options that we have. But given the fact that we don't know what the next school year is going to be like, and we don't know what our options are going to be, and we know that the money that we have budgeted is probably not going to cover, well, I shouldn't say probably not, is not going to cover all of the anticipated costs with social distancing, PPE needed for students and staff, additional transportation costs. What do we do if we normally have a classroom of 25 that is now 15 or 12? So we're actually cutting classes in half? What impact is that going to have on our schools in the way that we normally do business? That is definitely going to impact us financially, and one of the things we're most concerned about, for those of you who don't know, we are, Cumberland, even before this coronavirus outbreak and the closing of school, Cumberland was already designated for a cut in state aid of $850,000. So we were already operating with $850,000 less than what we would, than what we have gotten in the past. So, and there's a belief that there may be more of a cut under the circumstances, given the fact that the state has a $900 million budget deficit. So the reason that we have these two sets of layoffs tonight, one is for the budget that was submitted, the school committee already voted on the budget, and those layoffs were included in that budget that was passed by the school committee. And now we're faced with the second option of having to lay off folks, their layoffs, they're not cuts, and people are not losing their jobs, but until we know what the future will hold, we are in this position, difficult position that we find ourselves in tonight. So I just want to let everybody know, and anyone who's ever heard me speak publicly, we have worked really hard to add positions. We value all positions. We understand that all of the positions that are involved in layoffs, they are important positions that have tremendous value to our students. I have said it, I don't want to lose anyone, and this makes people a little crazy because I want to add people. I think we need more people. So I understand that it is unsettling when people get a layoff notice. I just want everyone to understand, try to understand why we're in the position that we're in, and it is our hope that anyone that is laid off, should the school committee decide to support the recommendations, that we would get them back sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have at this point.
One second, Mr. Fiorello. Mr. Mitchell, unless, Mr. Fiorello, unless it pertains to the superintendent's comments, I had skipped over the high school band that was going to do the national anthem, and I would like to have that get done as soon as possible. So go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
I just want to point out that the second set of layoffs is a direct result of this committee asking the superintendent for a worst-case scenario layoff list.
Right.
So that, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, I'm sorry, you should have queued me right after the Pledge of Allegiance, but Mr. Faroche had asked that the high school band members, or the members of the band do the national anthem. So could you queue that up, please? I mean, they worked hard to do this on Zoom, and I'd like to get it played, please.
Sure thing.
Then we'll move on to the report of standing committees.
Well done.
Well done. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. Faroche and the band, and it's actually the Clef Singers. Sorry. Man, they're award-winning team here. Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda, report of standing committees. Mr. Salvatore, payment of bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Payment of bills was on our agenda tonight, but we did not have any bills to pay, so there's no payment of bills.
Okay, next is the fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Salvatore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fiscal subcommittee met today at 5:30 PM on Zoom. All members of the fiscal were present, including myself, Mr. Demarica, and Mrs. Bernato. That was a very short meeting. There was, there was no vote taken. One, actually, I apologize, there was a vote taken, that we'll talk about a little bit later on, which is by board, we'll get into that. Mr. Pragnano did give a brief update. We still have a run rate of over $1 million in savings due to the COVID-19, and that also Sedesco Food Service is still making lunches three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, around 90 to 100 meals per day, so that's still looking good. And I believe that is about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. Next is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not been able to meet, obviously, because administration's been very busy with everything going on with the budget right now and COVID-19. We hope that we'll be able to start having some meetings in July. I mean, sorry.
Thank you. Next is Achievement Communications Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Friedman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this subcommittee met on Tuesday night, and Mr. Demana gave an overview of potential scenarios for the fall, but just like Mr. Mitchell said, this is just, just potential, potential, potential scenarios, trying to follow CDC guidelines or following CDC guidelines, taking input from the parent survey, and hopefully, some guidance from RIDE that's supposed to come by the end of the week. Just like Mr. Mitchell said, there's lots of resource limitations, classroom, staff, busing, budget, medical supplies, further state aid reductions, I mean, the list goes on and on, but essentially, Mr. Demana presented three potential scenarios. The first is that K through 5 would be in school, in the physical school, and 6 through 12 would be 100% distance learning. For each of these scenarios, he presented pros and cons. The second scenario was that we would be in a hybrid mode, where across the district, 50% of the students at any point in time would be in the physical school, and 50% would be in distance learning, and that would rotate. And then the third scenario was that everybody would be 100% distance learning. According to the administration, they, their choice would be scenario 2, where we're 50% in school, 50% distance learning, but always able to revert to distance learning if there were an outbreak or, you know, something else happened. So he presented those scenarios, we talked through some of them, but again, you know, in the budget implications, but until we have more guidance and we know where we're at, which is why we may not be able to make some of these decisions for several weeks, which does put the district in a bit of a bind in terms of looking at the budget and looking at staffing and looking at everything, that it is a, like, day-by-day approach right now. So it was, it was a good meeting, we had over 100 people attend, and I hope that the community stays engaged in this and can continue to attend those. We don't have our next meeting scheduled, but they're typically on Tuesday nights at 5:30 and probably the week after next week, where we will continue to provide updates on where the thinking is related to what happens in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. Next is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee, Mrs. Bernato.
Thank you. Yes, this committee has not met at this time, I have nothing to report right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is comments from the public. As I had stated earlier, the school committee adopted a policy a few months ago where the public comments are three minutes. We do know the union leadership wanted to speak tonight, so we will indulge with them and to speak a little bit longer, but again, if you have any personal attacks whatsoever, you will be muted because we're not going to tolerate the personal attacks. Please keep it professional. So, with that said, we have comments from the public, so it's going to be very hard with over 300, and I think it was 371 people that are on this call right now, to have public comments. So we're going to have to either raise your hand, Mr. Chandler, go ahead.
So I have a number of people that raised their hand, people that are on the phone versus through the client, some things I can control, some things I can't. So if you're on the phone, you can use star 9 to raise your hand. You can also control muting your microphone by using star 6 back and forth, so that'll mute and unmute. Right now, I have maybe six people that I have up, and it's not sorted in any order when they come on, so when we do call on you, I apologize if it's out of order from, you know, what the hand.
All right, Mr. Chandler, I do know that the union did want to speak tonight, so if there's a member from the union that was at the.
I see. Crystal, would she be your union representative, or?
Yes, the union, from the state.
All right.
Carrie Carlson would also like to speak, but I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, that's fine, Carrie, we'll call you, call for you.
Thank you.
Who would you like to start with?
Let's start with the representative from the state union.
Okay.
And then we'll go to Carrie, that fine with you, Carrie?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we can do it either way, it's up to you.
Okay, Crystal's all set.
All right, I'm all set. Can everybody hear me?
Crystal, thank you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to say for the record that layoffs, oh, and I am Crystal Burgantine from NEARI, I'm the Associate Executive Director of NEARI, sorry, and clarify. I want to say for the record that layoffs of this magnitude understandably cause disruption and anxiety. It also creates the possibility that good teachers, really good teachers, will leave this district and seek employment elsewhere. Not all of these layoffs are necessary, and none were done in consultation with the union. Cumberland students undoubtedly depend on all of these teachers to not only provide an education, but also guidance and reassurance during what is an extraordinarily unsettling and difficult time. I can only imagine what the needs of our students will be when they return to school, whether that is in a traditional classroom, in a virtual classroom, or a combination of both, having lived through this national pandemic. Again, I would like to impress upon this school committee the need for the urgency in resolving these budgetary issues. We must acknowledge that this is a town issue and has gone on far, far too long. I ask that the school committee acts quickly to reinstate our teachers for the well-being of every Cumberland student. That's my statement on the layoffs. I also want to state for the record that the union believes that the process in the layoff procedure, process and procedures is faulty. It's affected, it's potentially affected teachers of giving them their rights to decide whether to have the meeting heard in executive session or open session, and while I understand we are going to vote as, or you're going to vote as a whole and not mention individual teachers, I would say you can vote as a group, but each individual member has the right to be heard because this is their livelihood. It's a personnel matter on potential job elimination, and the union will argue notices were deficient because they were not given, they did not give the member the option to be heard in public session or executive session, and there is nothing in place other than this public comment session to allow the individual affected members of proper arena to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Carrie?
Good evening, I'm Carrie Carlson. I live at 80
I can only imagine what the needs of our students will be when they return to school, whether that is in a traditional classroom, in a virtual classroom, or a combination of both, having lived through this national pandemic. Again, I would like to impress upon this School Committee the need for the urgency in resolving these budgetary issues. We must acknowledge that this is a town issue and has gone on far, far too long. I ask that the School Committee acts quickly to reinstate our teachers for the well-being of every Cumberland student. That's my statement on the layoffs. I also want to state for the record that the union believes that the process in the layoff procedure, process and procedures is faulty. It's affected, it's potentially affected teachers of giving them their rights to decide whether to have the meeting heard in executive session or open session. And while I understand we are going to vote as, or you're going to vote as a whole and not mention individual teachers, I would say you can vote as a group, but each individual member has the right to be heard because this is their livelihood. It's a personnel matter on potential job elimination. And the union will argue notices were deficient because they were not given, they did not give the member the option to be heard in public session or executive session. And there is nothing in place other than this public comment session to allow the individual affected members of proper arena to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Carrie?
Good evening, I'm Carrie Carlson. I live at eighty-four Newell Drive. I am also a school counselor at McCourt Middle School and president of the Cumberland Teachers Association. Tonight, I'm asking the members of the School Committee to vote no on the superintendent's layoff recommendations. I understand we are living in very challenging and uncertain times, that we don't know the structure of school next year, and we don't know the amount of funding we'll be getting from the town, the state, or potentially the federal government. But I believe wholeheartedly that educating the whole child must be a priority. Schools have many roles and responsibilities. They must ensure students grow not only academically, but emotionally and socially as well. Not all of this growth happens in classrooms where we have core content taught. Students have valuable learning and life experience in all subject areas. Research shows that schools that offer arts education opportunities have better outcomes in terms of achievement, discipline, motivation, concentration, confidence, and teamwork. Our students at all grade levels need and deserve arts courses. It is no secret that mental health concerns are on the rise. For many of our students and families, COVID-19 is a traumatic event, and that will result in symptoms and challenges for a very long time. Many of our students have faced multiple life disruptions. Our schools provide critical and important social, emotional learning and health education and services for children. This is not the time to eliminate school psychologists, school counselors, nurses, and health and PE teachers. Students are most definitely going to turn to these people, to these professionals, to learn how to live healthy lives. Students are going to need knowledge, support, and strategies to cope with the challenges they face now and in the future. So again, I ask you to vote against the layoff recommendations. In recent years, the Cumberland Public Schools have made gains. Let's staff our schools so we can continue to make gains and achieve at a high level.
All right, thank you for addressing the School Committee. I know there's going to be others in the school that want to address the School Committee. Again, there is a three-minute time limit. Mr. Fiorello will act as our timekeeper, I guess, and again, please, no personal attacks. So if there's anyone else that would like to speak, to address the School Committee, I need you to kind of make yourself known to Mr. Chandler.
So I have a couple, I have a few more. I have Michelle Capello.
Okay, well, let's go right to her. Michelle? You have to unmute yourself if you can.
She is unmuted.
Michelle, can you hear us? Okay, let's put it on, let's put it on hold and let's go to the next one.
Carolyn Dooley.
Carolyn Dooley, you out there, Carolyn?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Hi, I am Carolyn Dooley. I'm at nineteen Greenview Street, and I'm also the art teacher at McCourt Middle School. And if you know me, speaking at something like the School Committee is not something I enjoy doing. We go through this every year, but we recognize that this year is drastically different. Arts are the soul of a school. For many students, it's why they attend, it's what gets them out of bed in the morning. Your art educators know this because we are artists who teach. As such, we bring real-life, twenty-first century learning and experiences to the art studio classroom in an engaging environment. The arts are needed now more than ever. The arts feed a social, emotional need. In fact, just this fall, McCourt's Art Program collaborated with OCYL Steamshop to pilot an expressive arts program. This enrichment program was highlighted in the National Art Honor Society magazine. We work with social workers, teachers, and doctors to bring this program statewide. Cumberland is leading the way. Our enrichment programs that happen in our district are art clubs, chapters in the National Junior Art Honor Society, and the National Art Honor Society at the high school level. In addition to these distinguished organizations, we ensure that our students have meaningful field trips to art museum, art museums, collaborate workshops for our children, our students, such as with the Cumberland Library. This includes a virtual field trip with our library, complete with workshops next week. We polled our students, they asked that we have art workshops because they want to make art. Our distance learning experience has changed, but our visual art curriculum goals have not. We've made adjustments and problem solve to make it happen. This is what the arts do, we figure it out. We credit this smooth transition to the School Department, ensuring that we would be in the forefront of twenty-first century learning with technology. We are a one-to-one district, and we lead the way for other districts. Art educators stand equal with core teachers. We are specialists and we're professionals. Our day does not end when the contract day is over. We stay late or come in early for our students to have studio time for extra help. That's what professionals do. We spend countless hours exhibiting student work and submitting student work to contests. In fact, Central Admin showcases our students' work every, from every school in the district in their private art gallery. Also, two of our middle school students, one from each middle school won honorable mentions in the statewide Lindsay Ann Burke Healthy Relationship poster contest in collaboration with our health teachers. As you can see, these countless hours stretch far beyond the school day. Our students are given opportunities as a result of our late nights and weekends to ensure our students' work is exposed to the state and the country and globally. Yes, globally, a lot of our contests are international. The Art Education Association supports a plethora of art opportunities for students. We do these things because it is expected of us as professionals, and we want to do it. My non-art teacher friends and family have to remind me that I'm fortunate that I love my job. My students inspire me, and I in turn inspire them. The art studio classroom is a place to discover, build, design, and problem solve. I teach because I love to share my.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dooley, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay.
Mrs. Dooley, thank you for, for your passionate speech about what you mean and the students mean to the school district. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chandler.
I have a group, I have a group of people. I'll go through the name of how they're planning on speaking. So it'd be Colin Smith, Joe Lennon, Chris Fernandez, Brendan Casey, Liz McDonald, and Carrie Kopenter. So we can start unmuting them, or you can unmute yourselves to.
Are they going to speak as a group?
They got, speak in order, I guess.
All right, so let's do the first one.
Yep, Colin.
Hey, I'm Colin Smith. I live at twelve Sandy Way in Cumberland, Rhode Island. I am a phys ed and health teacher and the department head at Cumberland High School. I'm also, as mentioned earlier, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, the head wrestling coach here, and I will be potentially a future parent of my two young boys entering Cumberland within the next year. I just wanted to briefly just go over two things that I felt most important when I heard these news and started reading the emails. You know, I, the first thing that came to my mind is how proud I am of the work that has been done by my staff. Not only my phys ed staff at Cumberland High School, but the remainder staff, everyone that's involved. It's been a phenomenal job for us to adjust. I would say that, I think I can speak for all of us, that we all value education, and we're thrown off by this uncertain time when we had to go to distant learning. I think a lot of people might ask, well, what does phys ed look like in a distant learning type of situation, right? I think we were more prepared than we thought. I think our district's done a great job with creating Chromebooks for everyone, Google Classrooms, and these are things in our health education and our phys ed education, K through twelve, that we've already started implementing years before that this situation occurred. I've been extremely proud of the staff that I work with and the stuff that they've been doing. I get calls consistently late at night, eight, nine o'clock, in this new age where there are no hours to work in this distance learning, constantly asking me to reflect and review their Screencast Fives, their YouTube videos, that they're creating platforms for their students to showcase, whether it be their fitness activity work or it be something that deals with their mental health, drug education, same curriculum that we've been working on throughout the time that we've been here. It's been exciting to work with people that have found these creative ways to be able to still teach the same essential and important content that we're, that we're really happy to be able to display to our students. The second part that I really just wanted to stress is, as a parent here, I thought it would be important to know that I became a teacher here ten years ago now. I've been coaching here eleven, and I did not live in the Cumberland School District. I believe in it, I value it. I really see the strides that are going on, not only in my own apartment in the last ten years I've been here, but as a whole community. And I've moved my family here to raise my kids here, to attend school here. And I'm a little baffled and I'm a little nervous to send my kids to a school that would potentially stop or halt the progression and the movement that is going on with our arts, our music, and our phys ed department as a whole. I think the work and the essential instruction that's being given to these students is so vital to them on an everyday basis, especially when we're going to these untoward waters. I've been able to speak with K through twelve phys ed teachers consistently over the last few months, and I'm really excited to hear the plans that they have for this upcoming September, not knowing what our platform may be. It is our job to make sure that this curriculum gets brought out to them, no matter what the circumstance is. And they've done a great job creating opportunities and refocusing curriculum on the needs that might be happening this upcoming September, depending on our virtual learning plan. Ironically, the next person I would like to speak would be my future phys ed teacher, Joe Lennon, for my two little boys that would be entering potentially next year.
Mr. Smith, thank you, Mr. Chandler, who's on next?
Joe Lennon.
Joe Lennon, Mr. Lennon, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Lennon, and I'm located at forty-eight North U Avenue in Cranston. Currently, I'm a physical education teacher, lead teacher at Ashton Elementary School for the past eight years. First, I'll say that I love where I work, the town of Cumberland and Ashton Elementary. Actually, it's where I met my wife. Will, will always hold a special place in my heart. In fact, we got married a week or so ago, and a few days later, we found out that we were facing potential layoffs. As you can imagine, it might be much of an emotional roller coaster. However, I speak before you today to offer you a glimpse as to what physical education really looks like, not just in school, but virtually as well. Mr. Smith, you alluded to some things that accrue to the development of our students, progression and prerequisite knowledge, some of the things you were kind of hinting at. From elementary to middle school, all the way up to the high school, Cumberland's physical education programs depend on each level to teach a rigorous set of expectations, physically, mentally, and emotionally. Our Cumberland program is interconnected with each level, depending upon the previous one, to educate students on essential knowledge to excel as they continue their educational journey. Cliving students of that prerequisite knowledge is the equivalent of asking someone to write a novel without learning the alphabet first. That is the impact some of these proposed layoffs would have. Can you run before you walk, so to speak? Of course, that doesn't include physical education, includes adaptive physical education, health education, and many more areas I'll point out in a moment. I can tell you for that, the past two years, elementary school physical educators have been creating a new health curriculum. If these proposed cuts stand, none of these professionals would be back next year. I wonder what happens to the curriculum then. The physical education teachers, as some of you may not know, wear many, many different hats. What I mean by that is we go well above and beyond the physical education classroom. We do that not for more money, not for more recognition, but for our students whom we have watched grow and mature over the course of three, four, five, and yes, even six years. Often use the term "our" kids because the level of connectedness we feel to those students, to our community, and to this town has that effect. I know our kids feel a sense of connectivity as well, especially when I wear Buddy the Elf onesie costumes to win the ugly sweater contest, and I'm still the champion. As I mentioned before, physical education teachers wear many different hats, which only further develop that bond between us and our kids. There are many physical education teachers in this meeting right now, but they are also APE teachers, health teachers, lead teachers, health curriculum developers, crisis intervention team members, student support team members, coaches of numerous sports, class advisors, student council advisors, and PBS chairpersons that plan the unforgettable events we as children never forgot as we grow up. In many cases, we can, excuse me, in many cases, these can be examples of variety of titles that not just one of us can hold in an academic year, virtually or not. If I went through the list of all the duties and committees each of us is in on, you would get sick of hearing my voice. Can you imagine losing all of that? With these roles comes great responsibility. As we continue on our unexpected distance learning journey, we have not only had to rebuild our curriculums on the fly, but we continue to dedicate ourselves to the various different positions.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm going to have to cut you off.
And I say the one last thing, and I'm done.
Go right ahead.
School committee members tonight, we implore you to bring us back home. Our community, and most importantly, all of our kids, deserve that.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, next, and Mr. Fiorello, could you keep that time exact for us, please, so we can hear that one in?
Sure.
Thank you.
Next one is Chris Fernandez.
Chris, could you please get my camera to work for me?
Let's see where you are, Chris.
Believe him on the panelist side.
Should get a question now.
Perfect, thank you very much. All right, hello, everyone. I'd like to stop by thanking the members of the community who took the time to attend this meeting tonight. My name is Christopher Fernandez of Smithville, Rhode Island. During my fourteen years of employment with the Cumberland School Department, I've had the privilege to serve as a physical education teacher, health education teacher, adapted physical education teacher, athletic coach, and district coordinator for the school year program artistic uses for the special education population. I'm not here tonight to tell you why we should keep physical education and health education as part of our public education system. We all know the social and emotional benefits to these subjects. We also know the cognitive, communicative, and cooperative benefits these subjects provide. Instead, I'd like to take a different approach and share with you some of the Rhode Island General Assembly laws that would be violated if layoffs are to be approved tonight. According to Title twenty, two hundred, Chapter twenty, Subchapter ten, Part one, Subsection A, the Rhode Island Board of Education states, "The basic education program, also known as the BEP, is a set of regulations promulgated by the Council of Elementary and Secondary Education pursuant to its delegated statutory authority to determine standards for the Rhode Island public education system in the maintenance of local appropriation to support its implementation under Rhode Island General Law sixteen dash twenty dash four." Subsection C continues to say, "Though each LEA or local education agency may offer different options to its students, each student must get a little bit, or at least a little of what is in the BEP." This section finally finishes by saying the BEP is regulatory in nature and as such has full force of law. I'd like to repeat that. This states that subjects in this BEP are enforceable by law. When you look at Section one dash two dash one of the Rhode Island BEP, there are subsections that read that the following subjects are required by law in all public schools grades K through twelve. These subsections read, English, language arts, math, social studies, science, dance, music, theater, visual arts and design, comprehensive health, and physical education. With respect to Section one dash two dot one, Subsection L, comprehensive health, I would like to paraphrase in order to save time. It also talks about, we'll talk about this later. This section talks about a high-quality health education program that provides all students knowledge and skills necessary to maintain healthy lifestyles. It goes on to say that these should be sequential, comprehensive, developmentally appropriate, and instructed through grades K through twelve and taught by a health education teacher. Finally, in Sections one dash two dash one, Subsection M, the Rhode Island BEP speaks about physical education. In this law, it talks that every school should have a highly qualified physical education program that leads to the development of knowledge and skills necessary to lead a physically active lifestyle. This goes on in further detail in the Rhode Island.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
The, next one is Brendan Casey.
Mr. Chandler, could you please put my camera on, please?
It doesn't look like you show, hold on, let's see if we can, let's have it in the camera.
Can you see me?
How's that?
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and good evening, everyone. My name is Brendan Casey, and I'm a health and phys ed teacher at Cumberland High School. I've taught at Cumberland High School, BF North Elementary in North Cumberland. I would like to take a moment to draw your attention to the Cumberland School Department strategic plan and the proposed tests. For those of you who are joining tonight for the first time, it's important for you to know that our leadership who is endorsing the massive layoffs religiously preaches the importance of the district's strategic plan. So let us address the district's strategic plan. According to the district's strategic plan, we believe in our teachers. However, these proposed layoffs clearly contradict that statement when you claim that we are nonessential. We believe all decisions shall be data-driven using evidence-based best practice. Well, we ask you yet again, what evidence have you collected to support your claim that state-mandated health and physical education are nonessential content areas? We believe we can conquer any challenge.
We believe we can conquer any challenge. To this, I say yes. Yes, we can. And the teachers, students, and families did just that during this pandemic. At a time when students needed health and wellness the most, we provide more, and we will continue to provide, because that is what we do. We conquer any challenges we face, especially those that threaten the health and wellness of our students. We will conquer any challenges, even the challenges instilled upon us by our leadership. The district plan has four areas of strategic emphasis, one of which is wellness and the whole child. So please explain to the community, parents and the students, how your claim that health and phys ed are nonessential subject areas supports a second pillar of the strategic plan. The district strategic plan states, "We believe all stakeholders in our community are responsible to identify, communicate, and respond to emotional, nutritional, and physical needs of our community members." How do you intend to support that claim when you are proposing to take away health and phys ed from our students? Develop and execute a social and emotional learning curriculum. Please explain how that can accomplish, can be accomplished without the support of health and phys ed teachers. I'm gonna skip ahead here so I don't get cut off.
Mr. Casey, I will never cut off anyone in uniform. Go right ahead.
It states, "Provide learning opportunities to connect nutrition and the kinesthetic effect on learning in content areas." Well, how do you intend to accomplish this without nurses and health and phys ed teachers? Utilize data to support the impact on student growth academically, socially, and emotionally. Yet again, we see a failure in leadership's ability to provide data to support their actions that eliminate the academic, social, and emotional support systems of these students. Coordinate a stronger connection between wellness and PBIS. Well, let me ask you, how many of the health and phys ed teachers in this district are check-and-connect mentors, are safety care certified, and are your major support system when it's support systems when it comes to establishing positive relationships with students? We make wellness and PBI PBIS connections with every student in every building at every level. Removing us from these positions is a clear indicator of the lack of support and resources you are willing to provide to the students of this district. In conclusion, I ask you to please make the decision. Make the decision to admit that this strategic plan is documented fallacies and hypocrisy, or make the decision to support the students and families of this town, live up to the district strategic plan, and provide the students with the health, physical education, and wellness supports they deserve. Thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Mr. Chandler, who's next?
Uh, Liz McDonald.
Liz, Mrs. McDonald.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz McDonald of Coventry, Rhode Island, and I'm a physical education and health teacher at Cumberland High School and have been for the past seven years. I would like to focus my piece of our presentation on the fact that physical education and health is a vital part of all students' education, both in person and virtually. Now, many people, including our central administration, may think that as a department, we continue to have an old-school mentality when it comes to PE. I mean, if we aren't physically holding class in the gym, can we even teach? The answer is yes. Not only has each and every physical education teacher implemented effective instruction throughout distance learning, but we have also created brand-new curricula in response to distance learning that focus on the needs of our students throughout what may be for some the most traumatic time of their life. Our virtual curriculums and lessons are rigorous. They meet state and national standards and address cognitive, affective, and psychomotor domains, even though we were guided by our administration to quote-unquote dumb down our curriculum through these times. We have learned and implemented multiple educational platforms throughout our lessons, just like all of our colleagues in other content areas. It's time for our central administration to start realizing that physical education is so much more than "are you athletic?" And truly value the education that we provide to all students. Our class is a core class and should be looked at as one. Our students recognize the importance, our parents recognize the importance, and it is our hope that you as a school committee also recognize the importance. Finally, I would like to leave you with this thought. Our central administration prides itself on making quote-unquote "data-based decisions." As a community, you are constantly reminded of the data that supports their district initiatives, whether that be specific to a later school start time, becoming a top-five district in the state, or what scenario is best for our families in the fall. So my question to our superintendents who is making the recommendation to get rid of our positions is, where is the data that supports your decision? What modality was used in gathering the data? Who did you survey to find out that physical education, health, and the entire unified arts department were deemed unnecessary during distance learning? Or was this just a personal opinion that our administration has towards our subject matter because they do not feel like our content can be properly implemented without actually doing the research? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, who's next?
Uh, Carrie Carpenter.
Carrie, go ahead.
Hey, I believe I'm unmuted, yes?
Go.
Great, thank you. So good evening. Uh, my name is Carrie Carpenter. I live at ninety-eight Thomas Slayton Boulevard. I have lived here in Cumberland for almost twenty years. I have coached here for fifteen, and I've taught here for right around that twenty-five-year mark. Adopted phys ed as well as phys ed, and I'm currently at North Cumberland Middle School. My appearance here tonight um is is not to repeat the sentiments of my colleagues before me, yet to support those sentiments and leave us with that one lasting thought. Um, and maybe that's not so much as a thought, but just a lingering question for our mindset moving forward. Ripple effect. Defined as a spreading effect or a series of consequences caused by a single action or event, are we as a community, as educators, as townspeople, as decision-makers, prepared to witness the potential ripple effect of the wellness of our children when we begin dismantling the very areas of education that support their wellness? During this time in history, we have been challenged with finding the cohorts of people that we are able to be with safely, that very small group to keep us from being exposed to COVID nineteen. Currently, as we prepare to open, we find those cohorts of people widening to friends and extended families and neighbors. Together, we, as a town of Cumberland, we make up our own very special cohort people. We share our business, one business. Our customers, our kids, students. Within each of our cohorts of people here, we're faced with our own set of challenges. Parents up against their schedules, finances, healthcare, et cetera. Teachers figuring out how to peel back the layers of each and individual child in order to find their strengths, hiding among all of the weaknesses and the challenges that each student brings. Administration, unfortunately, the budget, horrible. You, our school committee, face with the task of sorting through and trying to make sense of all of the stakeholders, viewpoints, different angles, and our interests, and we come before you in all of our different pleas. But at the end of the day, every day, we have learned that our decisions begin and end with what is supposed to be in the best interest of the child, our number-one customer. So what you've heard from our co- my colleagues tonight is that the concern in the areas of PE and health and the entire unified departments are continually targeted and have lately been defined as not needed and not necessary with no evidence, no research, no data, and no knowledge of what the students have actually been learning and experiencing over these past twelve weeks. So I suppose I would ask, are you willing to be that first ripple without any data whatsoever?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Chandler. Karen Longest.
Karen?
Yes, hi. Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Karen Longest, twenty-one Norton Drive. Um, I spoke last year in front of the school committee about the subject matter of cutting the arts. And unfortunately, I feel the need to speak about it again since we seem to be in the same situation. Um, I sent a letter already to all the members of the school committee a few weeks ago, so I'm not going to go over all of that. But every year, there seems to be a lack of funding and thoughts of cutting positions or programs. At a previous school committee meeting a few weeks ago, I spoke about the amount of money that Cumberland gives to BVP and the charter school funding. With cuts from the state to Cumberland and BVP getting an increase from the state plus the PPP loan, we need to make noise at the state level because clearly this is not in the best interest of our students, teachers, or staff. The savings could be used for the proposed cuts and give our students a complete education, one that includes all of the arts. I would ask that every committee member spend time in those arts classrooms to see how engaged and happy those students are. And I would also ask the school committee that they request the administration come back with a scenario for the fall that includes the arts for all students at the same level of importance as the other core subjects, not as a filler for students whose parents are working. The arts are needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler.
Cheryl Burke.
Cheryl, can you hear us?
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, this is Cheryl Burke is my mother. Uh, this is Hannah Burke. I live at eighteen Poison Street. I am currently a junior and soon to be a senior at Cumberland High School. Since moving to Cumberland thirteen years ago, I have spent my academic career in your school system, and the arts have been a massive part of my entire life and school career. It is my greatest wish to go to college to pursue the arts as an educational career. It would particularly break my heart to see the teachers, specifically the ones at CHS that have mentored me, cared for me, and helped me grow through my all three years of high school, be sent away because their content was not considered essential to the learning curriculum. The arts are important to specific students like myself who rely heavily on them to build a portfolio for college. And even more important to me are the teachers that teach them. I know my art teachers put heart and soul into their teachings and the care and comfort of their students. I know how hard they have worked over these years to fight for what they love and make sure the arts get the proper treatment, recognition, and credit by the school administration. It would be heartbreaking to have all those efforts wiped away. You say that one of the main issues is that these classes would not be able to function due to this proposed distance learning plan, but somehow they have functioned just fine in the past two months with no warning, notice, or preparation. If it is impossible to achieve in the future, then how are we executing it just fine now? Art is the same and is at the same level as all these other distance learning classes are and has been executed just fine, and I do not see why this is precedent for it to be taken away. Most of my classes that I have chosen to take during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year are art classes, which are essential to building my portfolio and teaching me the subjects I need for what I want to choose as my career in college. Even though only one art class is required, these requirements should be adjusted to students who want to be more focused on their studies because it is essential for students, especially at the high school level, as this is the level of their academics where they start to deviate their educational focus to hone the skills they need for stepping into the real world. Well-rounded students that leave the high school cannot just be spit out with a history or a science or a math class under their belt because that in no way is well-rounded at all. The arts have to be included in the students' learning if they want to be successful. We know you are trying your best and viewing every scenario to find the most effective outcome, but you need to stop and think about what this means to students. Imagine taking away history or science and how the students who love those classes and need them for the future education in the real world would feel if they were gone. I want to protect and advocate for what I love and the teachers that are so dedicated to this curriculum and their students. Without art, I am lost in life because it is because it is my passion, just as it is for many others. Just because I have a passion for art does not mean that it is any less insignificant than if I had a passion for any other subject. It is not hard to see that art is just as equal as every other section of academics taught in this school system. It is not just an enrichment class. It is an essential subject of study for students in their careers for the future. I know there are many rough and hard choices that have to be made, but please try and think about the students and the teachers and the choices your actions will make. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler.
Sarah Dander and Jacobson.
Sarah, can you hear us?
That's actually Caleb Jacobson. I'm using my wife's computer.
Okay, Caleb, go ahead.
So I we live at fifty-six Marshall Ave, and I thank you, uh, each of the board members for your time and hearing us all out tonight. As a concerned parent, our biggest issue is with the layoffs uh put forth. Even if our our children are not going on to be professional musicians and artists or athletes, developing hobbies and healthy habits at a young age that will travel with them through adulthood has been clinically proven to reduce stress and make people more productive and successful in their professional lives. Why are we setting up our community for a future with citizens that are not as productive or as successful as they possibly can be? We're setting ourselves up for failure. Please, please reconsider the proposal to lay off our our teachers in the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Next is um Mr. Chandler, who would be next? We're gonna continue this for about another fifteen minutes if all possible so we could get through the rest of the agenda, but go ahead, Mr. Chandler, who's next?
Kyle Richard.
Kyle?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Um, I also, you can turn my video on too as well, if possible. Hello?
Yeah, you go.
Okay. Um, my name is Kyle Richard and my Cumberland address is six Ike Street. I want to take this opportunity to speak on the topic of cutting the arts as not only a former student of the Cumberland Public School System, but one who enrolled in every possible art class I was offered. As of three weeks ago, I'm a graduate graduate of the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, where I received bachelor's degrees in both graphic design and illustration. Because of the virus, I made the decision to come back home to Cumberland temporarily until I feel confident making the next move in my professional career. Coming home and reflecting on all the artwork that I've held on to from high school has really solidified how important, informative, and impactful my years at Cumberland High School in art classes specifically were in my path to becoming the creative professional I am today. In two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, um, was the when the department introduced two new art educators who are still there today. Their arrival to the department created a clear cultural shift in the energy and attention being brought to the arts that so many were fortunate to not only witness but be a part of. Twenty thirteen was the first year the department hosted the first of what would have been the eighth CHS art show this year, which serves an annual celebration of the achievements and talent displayed by CHS students. This includes students that plan to pursue art-related careers um, and also students whose primary focus wasn't necessarily in the arts. It was a celebration for everyone. Hundreds of people attend the event each year, an opportunity for students to show their pride in what they have made and for family and public to show unwavering support that they have for the arts. In the years to come, we saw the introduction of subject-specific advisories that would meet, including ceramics and chorus. This was an opportunity to meet with advisors that were teachers of the specific subjects students felt passionate about. This helped to foster greater connection with the advisors who were a resource of knowledge in the topics they taught, as well as strong relationships with fellow students that were just as passionate about the same subject. Both these advisories and the aforementioned annual art show are just two of the many examples of how a community exists around the art department and how important this community is to so many. Although these are examples of community building that cannot necessarily be recreated through distant learning, the loss of them already this academic year, in addition to the losing of them for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one academic year, will only have negative repercussions on the students who value and rely on the art department as a sense of security and growth. Whether or not these classes take place remotely, they are absolutely essential. If I've not made it clear already, the arts in my school education really shaped me and I can go with I can say with absolute certainty that I'm not alone in feeling this way. Whether or not a student goes forward in their arts education post-graduation, there's so much to be learned from what happens in these classes. The fundamental skills in art classes can be taught or can be used in all professional fields. STEM students will learn to observe new points of view to further innovate their innovate in their field, and even writers and journalists who relay information to use the use in the media and the news must find the most creative and effective way to relay information and get people's attention, which is no no different from the way that information is gathered, reimagined, and presented in a painting or a piece of music. To quote Rhode Island Governor Gina Raimondo less than a month ago during a daily briefing, "Art can be a source of comfort, hope, and inspiration," and I think we can all use a bit of that right now. Knowing how vulnerable this virus has been over the past few months, it is fair to say that if art can be a source of all three of these things two months into a global pandemic, I can only imagine how important it will be for our community several months from now. And speaking to you today, I'm proud to stand in solidarity with our governor, this department, and all the students in Cumberland who value their arts education. It will hurt without it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Chandler, next.
Is somebody labeled as Cumberland?
Hi, my name is Peter Trumpine. I'm a former Cumberland High School student. The I just have to say the arts really changed my life. I just have to say the arts really changed my life.
Hello, can you speak closer to whatever you're doing so we can hear you clearly? Thank you.
Yeah. Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Paige Fontaine. I'm a future, former student at Cumberland High School. I just have to say the arts really did change my life. I went from being bullied every day up for the six years I was in the Cumberland schools to going to school happy every day. I had friends that really did support me, and I'm currently a supervisor at my job, and they taught me how to be determined, how to speak out, and do what I need to do and get it done. I was, it saved who I was. I got more bullying when I left the high school. I was happy to go to school every day, and it really did treat me, well, help me and save my life in a way that I can say nothing else. It also, I became a band tutor for one of the freshmen in my second-year band. I did graduate from college, which helped me pursue my degree in psychology because I was a tutor with a kid with autism at the time, and I just, um, and I, as a kid, I could never do sports, so this was my way of being happy going to school and doing what I love at the same time.
Hi, Paige, thank you.
Dan Pedro?
Mr. Pedro? Go right ahead.
Can I get my camera on too, Mike, please? First, I'd like to open by thanking Amanda Santo for directing The Clef Singers.
Hold on, Mr. Pedro, the, you're not, camera, yeah?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
I just want to thank, first off, thank Amanda Santo on the record for directing The Clef Singers in that performance of the National. Secondly, Superintendent Mitchell. I'm, I'm going to make a comment that from the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Fiorello mentioned that these layoffs were directive from the school committee. If that is in fact true, then I want to go on the record and apologize for calling you out independently, although I did speak to every single school committee member, and I did tell them what my intentions were this week, and none of them spoke up at the time. So if that is the case, Mr. Mitchell, then you were doing what you were directed, and I retract my comments, and I will put the responsibility on the school committee. As far as the layoffs go, I know you guys are tired of hearing what I have to say, but many great statements have been made today about the law and our requirements to fulfill our education to the whole student. By my accounts and the conversations I've had with everybody, it seems to me that the plan might be to meet our mandated requirements for the entire district with two music teachers. If we can do that with two music teachers, then by that math, we only need ten math teachers and ten English teachers and ten social science teachers to meet the needs of the entire district. Okay? My argument has always been if you're going to make blanket layoffs, then lay off everybody. Lay off people from every department. Do not target just one group of individuals, especially at a time where schools like North Smithfield High School are offering school of choice. I can send my son to North Smithfield High School to pursue an avenue in the arts or business or anything else using Cumberland tax dollars. Now more than ever, people are going to be looking to homeschool their kids. We might be losing an enormous amount of revenue if we aren't careful with what programming we offer. So please keep that in mind when you make your decision to lay off an incredible staff of teachers that have gone above and beyond to meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Next, Mr. Chandler?
Susan Cody.
Susan, can you hear us, Susan?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Susan Cody. I'm currently in my second year as assistant principal for teaching and learning at McCourt Middle School. I've had the honor of holding several positions in the Cumberland School Department, including the interim principal at the community school four years ago and the interim principal of the great Cumberland High School three years ago. I'm in my second year now at McCourt. I'm speaking tonight because I believe I share a very unique perspective on what is going on in the Cumberland Public Schools right now. One of my teaching licenses is in physical education and health. I started my teaching career as a health teacher. As a health teacher, every year I got a pink slip and feared that I would lose my job. I was passionate about what I taught and still am. I was always upset and felt disrespected. To our phys ed, health, and unified arts teachers, I have walked in your shoes. I ended my career in Massachusetts as a superintendent of schools, and every year as a superintendent was charged by the school committee. And Mr. Pedro, just so you know, school responsibilities include budget and policy, and they charge this administrative team with cutting the budget and developing scenarios for them so that they can make decisions as school committee, people that you voted for. Every year as superintendent, as this process went on, I lost a little part of myself. As a leader overseeing a district, I knew I had to make reductions that would impact the lives of people I respected and personally cared about. I knew that unfortunately, that responsibility came with the role, the role that I had worked for all of my life and was so passionate about. During my fourth year of budget cuts, my fourth year of superintendent, I was put on blood pressure medication, all of my eyelashes fell out, I got constant nosebleeds, I couldn't sleep at night. I knew that I was making decisions that were impacting real people, people I loved and respected, and after four years, I left that position because I just couldn't take the physical and mental toll it was taking on me any longer. I have heard the comments being made and have read the posts and emails that are out there. This is a very emotional time for everyone, but I can assure you, having walked in your shoes, no one feels good about these decisions. No one wants to see these scenarios come to fruition for the children of Cumberland. And to Mr. Demana, I just want to say, I feel your pain. You have been one of the biggest supporters of the district's phys ed and health and unified arts programs. You, more than anyone that I have worked for as a central office administrator, have always thought about those departments and put them at the forefront. You have written grants to provide those departments with-
Sorry, Dr. Cody, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cody.
Have Mark Promiano?
Mark, can you hear us, Mark?
I can hear you, trying to get my, there you go.
There you go.
My name is Mark Promiano, I live at sixty-two Hyridge Drive. I'm a lifelong Cumberland resident, a CHS alum, a teacher at the English Department. I'm a father of a third grader in town, and I'm also the husband to Sarah, the dad teacher, in town. And I'm going to be reading something that I wrote earlier today. While I'm well aware that my status as the husband of the teacher might decrease my credibility in your eyes, I hope that as I elaborate on the perspective that I have as a father and as a teacher, you'll realize that my intentions go far beyond simply trying to save my wife's job. Rather, I want to focus right now on the importance of educating the whole child. The recognition that a child suffering from psychological, emotional, or physical distress is not in an ideal position to be fully engaged to learn. And this is so logical. When we are not well, it is extremely difficult to focus on the task at hand, especially when that task is daunting, like many academic tasks can be. So when acknowledging this, our district has made tremendous inroads over the past few years, establishing a wellness committee, fully investing in PBIS, and hiring school psychologists and social workers. Our district has smartly recognized that an investment in the wellness of our students is well worth the cost, improving the mental and physical health of our kids, and thus putting them in a better position to succeed in the classroom and in life. As an English and communication teacher of predominantly seniors over the past thirteen years, I have been dumbstruck often by the stories of suffering students, from their papers to their philosophical speeches to the senior oratorical event. Time and time again, I've been awed at what some of our kids have had to face and try to overcome in their lives. And as someone who has been closely involved with the school's PBIS initiative since its inception, I've been proud to be part of an effort to do what we can to improve the culture and climate of our school and indirectly to improve the lives of our kids. By acknowledging that many kids, many kids, by acknowledging that for many kids there are legitimate obstacles to success, we've been able to work together to create a learning environment that no longer turns a blind eye, but rather emphasizes the power of positive relationships, the power of wellness. With regard to the school district's ongoing battle to ensure wellness of our children, to ensure that we are truly doing everything in our power to put students in the best possible position to succeed, the foot soldiers on the battlefield every day are the teachers. And are there any disciplines that are more intimately connected to emotional, psychological, and physical wellness than our art, music, and physical education?
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. I apologize.
Thank you.
Ms. Leonard?
It's Hannah.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
So, hi, my name is Hannah Leonard. I live at eighty-four Abbott Run Valley Road. I am a graduate and senior from CHS this year. I have been a part of this school system for the last thirteen years, and every year PE classes and art classes have been vital to my success as a person. PE is vital to the health of all children. What would the ripple effect be if there was no one to push children off the couch while stuck at home? It makes you feel good to work out, and having that connection with a gym teacher will get you active, and it'll keep you healthy while you're stuck in these horrible circumstances right now at home and you can't go to school. And it's also, it's incredibly vital, just not only for your physical health, but also your mental health. And I also want to say with the art classes, I am a part of the National Art Honor Society, and I've taken art for the last four years. I am not going for an art degree, but taking art every year was vital for a midday mental break I needed from the bombardment of facts in my core classes. Art is needed to give everyone a breadth of creativity. Throughout this quarantine, I have not been writing essays or taking math tests for fun, but rather painting because that has allowed me to express myself more than anything. PE and art have always been crucial to a balanced mindset and for the health of all students. Removing them and considering them to be nonessential is blatant ignorance of the effect it has on the children of this town. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Good luck in college. All right, Mr. Chandler, where you, who, how many, how many, can you tell how many are left, Mr. Chandler?
I'll pull people up right now with their hands up.
How many?
Four.
Four, so let's do those four, and then we'll go to the agenda. There is additional time for comments from the public afterwards if they so choose. So let's go to the four, please, who's next?
Carrie Marshall.
Hi, Carrie, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Carrie.
My name is Carrie Marshall. I'm an art educator at Garvin and Ashton. I've also taught at BF Norton. We, all special area teachers, are exhausted of being used as bargaining chips to increase school funding. Our jobs are consistently on the chopping block in order to fill budget gaps that the administration has not been able to fix. We are professionals who are passionate and deserve to be valued and appreciated. We advocate for our students and ourselves every year. Now we need you to advocate for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Chandler?
John Wagam, Wagheim?
John, can you hear us, John?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Okay, so my name is John Wagheim. I live at one sixty-six Hattie Ave, and I'm a parent. My kids are only in elementary school, but I was curious, so I kind of looked at the High School Program of Studies, and it states that the arts and PE are essential for college readiness. And now it seems we're devaluing these roles and all of a sudden deeming them as nonessential. It seems kind of contradictory to me. I can only speak of the teachers at Ashton because that's where both my kids go, but the specialists at Ashton have been doing a great job coming up with creative ways to engage the students during regular and virtual learning. Kids need break from the, and I'm using air quotes right now, but kids need break from the core classes, but they need structured breaks which provide enriching activities. That's what these people provide. Most important thing we can do is keep all personnel in front of our students, keep some normalcy for the kids, value all the people that have been helping shape our community's kids for years. I would like to end with a question. Are administrators facing any potential cuts to save teachers? And I don't make this comment or ask this question lightly because anyone losing their jobs during these times is horrible, and I feel for anyone that does. These are people's lives. But with that said, do deans of discipline and assistant principals of culture and et cetera, do these people play a more important role than the teachers at these times? With that said, I hope we can come up with a creative solution where everybody remains whole, and most importantly, I hope you listen to the students that spoke tonight and multiply their sentiments by all the other students in the district. Thank you for listening today.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, this the last, or we got two?
There's, there's two more. Somebody else just added on, so you'll have, you'll figure out if you want to, anybody else, so.
So was he, what was he? Was he the second?
Two on the four, yep.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Megan Calmark.
Megan, can you hear us, Megan?
Yes, I can hear you.
You gotta, you gotta speak in closer because it's very faint.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear barely, but we can, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening to you all. My name is Megan Calmark, and I'm a junior at Cumberland High School. I'd first like to say thank you to the town school committee for organizing this meeting and giving us the opportunity to speak about the important issue of the value of art, music, and physical education departments at CHS. I know that what I am going to express will merely echo the sentiments of what others who have spoken before me and have spoken after me will say, but nonetheless, thank you for the opportunity. We'll start off by saying that I am hopeful that most of the attendees of this meeting share in my wishes and passion for keeping these amazing teachers and programs within CHS. The art, music, and physical education department of CHS have been one of the biggest sources of joy and positive influence within my time at the high school. I say this not only because I've had the pleasure of participating in many of the offered courses, but also because of the amazing staff that teaches them. When I look back on my time in the high school the past three years, the memories which stick out to me the most almost all involve one or more of these departments. Without even realizing it, students of CHS are positively impacted by these programs whether they participate in them or not. The wonderful music that is played at every football game in Peraloo, the singing at Ringtree, Foyer, and Nice Like Open House, and the cases we passed to the students. The art that will arise in every hallway, the beautiful echoes of games, sports, and faithful banter that come from the wellness center. These are the things that shape a high school experience. To imagine them all as gone is devastating. The students who rely on these programs is one of their only times of the day where they feel truly accepted and appreciated, the lack of liveliness that every school event will have, the absence of some of our favorite and most trusted staff members who we can come to for everything. It is, to put it simply, wrong. I believe that it is truly no one's place to say what is important and what is not to the experience of high school. We all have different values, interests, and opinions. The presence of equal opportunity and treatment of these beloved departments take nothing away from equally important core curriculum classes, yet their absence speaks volumes of what and who we value as a town. I know that it is not so simple as to just keep everything away. It has always been with these budget cuts, and in the midst of the pandemic, I am very sympathetic and thankful towards all of your efforts, but I would like to stress that these are the lives of our beloved staff that you are dealing with, and these are the lives and high school experiences of your future that you are handling. And with- And with all kindness and due respect, I ask you to handle them with care and empathy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Finally, Mr. Chandler.
Lisa D.
Lisa D, can you hear us, Lisa?
Yes, can you hear me?
You gotta speak, you gotta speak closer, but yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Lisa D'Antero. I live at 26 Gilbert Court in Cumberland. I have been a nurse for over 25 years. And while most of my career has been at Rhode Island Hospital, the last five have been at Cumberland Hill Elementary School. This plan, laying off not only us, the school nurses, but our art, music, PE teachers, our mental health staff, TAs, I feel it's so short-sighted. I mean no disrespect by this. I completely understand that this is a unique situation, and the status is changing daily. I work weekends at Rhode Island Hospital per diem, so trust me, I do understand the changes that this, that takes place daily. I'm extremely proud to be a part of a group of talented, kind, smart, compassionate nurse colleagues. We are with our students for years. Not only do we get to know them, but we also get to know their families. And I worry about these long-term effects of COVID-19 and what will, it will have on all of us, not just our students. Through distant learning, not only are we reaching out to these families and students, we are teaching health as well. We are also working tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure our children, your children, and staff will be safe when we return to school. I know that we have to wait for our, some guidelines from our governing bodies, but we also need time to prepare and put these procedures in place. I just feel that this is really not the time to lay off your school employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. That will conclude the public comments. At this time, there is another public comments afterwards. So we are gonna resume with the agenda. The next order of business is new business. It's discussion, indoor vote on certified layoff recommendations. Mr. Mitchell, is your team prepared to make a recommendation, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We have list A and list B?
Yes, list, list A. As I mentioned earlier this evening in my superintendent's report, those are the layoffs that are a part of the budget that you approved two weeks ago, Mr. Chairman, to balance the budget. My recommendation would be that you approve list A.
Okay, so the superintendent makes a recommendation for list A. This is the list of certified staff who the administration team is recommending for layoff for reasons that the school department will not be able to pay their salaries under the proposed fiscal year '21 budget. This layoff is for financial exist, existence sheet. And I need a motion, I'm gonna take a roll call vote when we do it. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello to approve. Do I have a second? Mrs. Freeman, you got on. Thank.
Sorry about that. I have, I have some questions that I'd like.
Once you make the, once you make the second, we can go into.
Okay, second for discussion.
Right, second for discussion. Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Fiorello and a second by Mrs. Freeman for discussion. So go ahead, Mrs. Freeman.
Thank you. So I have, I actually have a number of questions for Mr. Prignano and maybe Mr. Mitchell. I'm, and the reason, part of the reason I'm asking these questions is because I want the public to understand the progression of how we've gotten to where we are and what some other potential solutions may be. So I think Mr. Prignano is on the call, yes?
Mr. Prignano, are you here?
I'm looking for him. I'm not sure if he's muted. Let me check.
Mike, I don't see him on the list.
He was called, dialed in early on a phone number, so I'm just calling to see.
I am calling him. Are you on the call, Alex?
Yes, I am.
You are? Are you on your phone or?
I'm on the phone.
Okay, so, I'll let him know. So Mr. Chandler is on the phone lines?
Try that, Alex.
Mr. Prignano, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Freeman.
Okay. Okay, Alex, I have some questions. I might ask you to be going in your Wayback machine for your memory a little bit, but I'm just trying to get, get through this. So the original, I'm gonna say the original budget that you, you know, that the administration had brought to the school committee, not the one that we in the end approved, but the original one, had us using a certain amount of the fund balance and had a certain number of positions recommended to be laid off to meet, to balance our budget. Do you recall from that original budget what, what amount from the fund balance we were using?
Well, I, I'm not 100% sure of that number right now. I don't have it in front of me, because I didn't expect us to be talking about that. But the number that's in there now for one-time savings, the budget that we sent down to the town, is about $3.2 million. About $900,000 of that is COVID money. Of that 3.2, we have $3.2 million in one-time revenues. At the same time, though, we have about $1 million in one-time expenses, things that shouldn't occur again, higher unemployment, some of those type of things. So it's a net of about $2.2 million of one-time dollars that we're using to balance the budget that's down before the town now.
Okay.
And I believe, I believe the number was about, about 27, 28 people, and there were about six or seven of those that were retirees. It was about 20. I know you've gotten a different number recently, 10. I'm, I'm not sure where that number comes from, to be honest with you. I, I thought it was 20, the way I looked at the budget.
Okay, so there's the question, I guess this is, would be the question for Mr. Mitchell, because this is part of what we're voting on, is that original budget, before we took more money out of the fund balance, had us laying off 20 positions?
Right, about 20, 21 people.
In addition to retirements that, you know, weren't being filled. Now, this, this revised budget, and we took more money out of fund balance to save some positions. And so our revised budget and what we're voting for tonight, how many people or positions, what's the right word to, way to phrase this, are actually being laid off?
So.
Well, I guess.
Yeah. No, go ahead, go ahead, Alex.
Well, I believe we restored some kindergarten TAs. So that would have brought the number down, those part-time TAs.
So one of the things that is, if I may, one of the things that is difficult to follow is because it's, it's, layoff decisions are not like a one-to-one comparison. When, when you lay off positions, there, there is a, because of union contracts, there is a ripple effect based on seniority. So to, so the best answer that I can give, and I would ask Mrs. Dunkinson to jump in here, because she is more involved in this process than anybody, given all of the intricacies of the process, that there is essentially 10 positions that will be eliminated as a result. Is that, Mrs. Dunkinson, is that accurate?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so I wouldn't use, we're using the wrong terminology. So tonight, we're talking about layoffs. I was given cuts, I was given the budget cuts, which were implemented through a process that is governed by the contracts, the law, and, and, uh, the contract and the law. And which, which says that you use seniority and certification to determine layoffs. So when you talk about FTE cuts, which is what we talked about when we were talking about the budget, that's not, we're not gonna see an equal match in a layoff number. So on list A, there are 20 positions, 10 of which are, are a result of your budget decision. That doesn't, but the, but the, the number of FTEs that you funded in your budget remains exactly the same, and I have, I either have people for those positions or I have to hire somebody, because we don't have anybody that's qualified for those jobs.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I know early on in the budget process, we also talked about that if the union was willing to postpone their 2% increase, the union and G6 were willing to postpone their 2% increase for the 2020, 2021 year, that would result in, and this is the number I looked for, Alex, from you, a certain, a savings, which at one point I thought you said was, well, actually, like a $1.3 million, maybe?
No, no, it's, it's, the salaries for the 2% raise for the CTA is about $670,000.
Yep.
And the administrative is about $80,000. But then, when you, when you tack on the pension of about 17%, you know, that, that, that brings the number up into that somewhere, somewhere approaching $900,000.
So. And what is the total cost savings from eliminating those 10 positions? Do we have that number?
Is, is the, I'm not sure, the 10 positions, is that because the TAs came back? I mean, the kindergarten TAs came back, Katie?
You didn't, no, you, we, the, the number, the number of FTEs that you eliminated in the budget remains the same. Because some people retired and some, because some people resigned and told us they weren't coming back, that doesn't translate into the same number of cuts in, in human beings. It, it, it's, the layoff discussion is a very different discussion than your cut, than your budget cut discussion. I, I implemented what you all passed in your budget, it, using the rules set forth by the Rhode Island general laws and using certification and seniority. That's what I implemented. It resulted in 10 layoffs. The other 10 were one-year-only positions, positions that we have to reserve for the individuals who are coming back to district.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so then we have 10 positions that are, that are part of this. And if I may ask a couple more questions. The, what is the total amount of savings we're proposing with list B by eliminating those 34 positions?
The salaries on that group totaled over $2.5 million.
And does that include pension, Mr. Prignano?
No, that was just, no, that was just salaries.
Okay.
So another idea, Alex, that you had proposed the last time we spoke, is this idea of a, a one-pay period furlough that would take, instead of having 26 pay periods, you'd have, you'd have, well, you'd have 20, 25 paychecks, let's say, spread out over 26, and you said that that would be $1.6 million, I think you said, in savings?
Well, yeah, a one, two-week period is about $1.5, $1.6 million in salaries.
So I guess what my point is, is that if concessions could be made in other areas and from the CTA and from G6, from the administrative side, there's either the ability to save some positions or give us not to, give us some flexibility so we don't need to lay off 34 positions. That's my question.
Well, yeah, certainly if, if people forego raises and people forego a week's pay and, what, more or less, and, and remember, what I had suggested was not foregoing it, but.
Right.
Pushing it into, into another fiscal year, so that they would get, they would get it, but they would get it, you know, the next, some of it the next year and some of it the year after. So it'd be a two-year thing. They'd get a week each year to get back even. Yeah, that money could be, obviously could be used to, to, you know, to retain people. Sure, could be used for, could be used for busing, could be used to retain people, could be used for cleaning supplies, could be used for anything that we felt we had to.
So the, so the idea of, you know, in both of these scenarios, whether it's postponing the 2% increase, it's postponing it.
Collins, I see.
It's not saying you'll never get it. It's postponing it. And the furlough is also, that would also be paid back, you're saying, over a two-year period?
Right, yeah, it was, I don't think the administration ever was proposing to take money away, but to just put it, matter of fact, the 2% raise, it was, we were gonna, we were actually gonna pay interest on the 2% raise. So they would get, they would defer their 2% raise, but whatever raises were negotiated until they got it would be added to that, whatever they deferred. So it would almost be like putting that money in a savings account. You know, probably equal to what a, you know, a CD rate today is. It would just be, you know, plus savings for them. And, and they would get it at, you know, with staggered probably over three years, because we couldn't give it all back in one year.
Okay, so one more thing, Mr. Chair. So we, so I guess I, I implore and hope that the CTA can come back for discussion on this. Any of the layoffs that get voted on tonight, if the, if the vote is, yes, we lay, we choose to lay these off, as Mr. Mitchell said earlier tonight, we can recall people once we have a better sense of what our budget is. And if we're able to make concessions and we're able to find money in other places, because we know we're not getting it from the state, and we know we're not getting it from the town, and we know we're not getting it from other places. So we have to figure out as a, as a district, how, how do all of us help some of us? How do all of us help save as many positions as possible? So if the vote is to, to send layoff notices, please know the work can continue to find ways to bring back as many people as possible.
Mr. Collins, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Freeman, I actually heard the term "furlough" during the subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, and I'm hearing it again tonight. Have you or anybody else actually talked to the union about this idea of a furlough? Or is this just something that's being presented without their consults?
Can I believe the paycheck from, I'll answer this, Mr. Collins. I believe the, the idea of the two weeks of the pay, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, the.
That was, the superintendent had a conversation with the union president over the last couple of days in regards to that issue, that she said that she would consider it. But I understand she is looking for additional details before the union would do it. Mr. Mitchell, you wanted to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may. Just, I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on this. To her credit, Mrs. Carlson said that, that she was willing to continue the conversation. No specific details were discussed. The union did not, you know, we did not talk about furloughs in our discussion. We actually had a conversation today. So I just wanna. furloughs in our discussion, we actually had a conversation today, so I just wanna make sure that, 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 you know, we state publicly that there was no specific detail discussed, and we'll have to continue our conversations with the, the union moving forward.
And when we talk about any of those things, we are not, just so everyone knows, we're not just talking about the teachers' union. We are talking about administration as well.
That is correct.
What's good for one is good for the other, so I don't want people to think that this is just being targeted at, at the CTA.
That is correct. I, Mrs. Waters, do you want to, are you looking to speak? You have to unmute. No? I, I can't hear a thing. Alright, I just wanna point out for the record that we started back in February of 2020 to have discussions with the union about helping manage a budget shortfall that we, you know, feared would come. And we're now at the end of May, and we didn't get anywhere at the moment, but I'm hoping that the teachers' union can come together with us and help us. I mean, it's, every year we go back to the teachers, it's, you gotta help, you gotta help, you gotta help. You know, and it goes back to, you know, a town that level-funded the school district for many years, and they were told it's gonna come back to haunt you, and it's come back to haunt us, so if there's no one else here that has any questions in regards to this, Mr. Fiorello, go ahead? No? Okay, so here and none, I'd like to take a roll call vote on list number A, which is the 20 employees due to budgetary reasons. So Mrs. Friedman?
So, Mr. Chair, if I vote yes, yay, that means I am voting to lay off, to
To lay off
to accept this recommendation.
Yes, correct.
So I will say, you know, none of us wanna vote for it, for any of this, but I am very hopeful that we will be able to be in a better place than we are right now, even just in a few weeks. But considering this is our budgetary one, that we already approved, that we've approved the budget and everything, I vote yes on this.
Yes. Mr. Fiorello?
Aye.
Yes. Ms. Bernado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
No, opposed.
Opposed. Mr. Salvatore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the superintendent's recommendation, and, I mean, sadly, it's not something that, you know, I'd like to do, but I vote yay.
And the chair votes yes as well. Did I miss anyone here?
Mrs. Waters.
Yes, I'm sorry.
For the same, for the same reasons that Mrs. Friedman provided, that we hope to bring back as, as many as we can. For list A, I vote yes.
Alright, so the, the vote is six to one in favor of approving the layoffs of list A, and one opposed by Mr. Collins. Thank you all. Mr. Superintendent, on list B. It is the program reorganization, and I believe
Right, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things before I just provide a little bit of information about list B. I wanna make sure everybody knows that I am a proud recipient of a degree in health and physical education. I taught health for 10 years, and to me, there's nothing more important than one's health. So I, without question, see art, music, nurses, phys ed, health teachers. I see them all as essential, so I wanna make that perfectly clear. We're in this, in this particular situation today because we had to make a decision before the June 1st deadline imposed by state regulation. The governor had hoped to extend, extend that June 1st deadline for at least 30 days until July 1st. I believe if we had more time, we would not, we might not be in the situation that we're in today. So we are hopeful that things will work out, and that all of the individuals that are identified on list B, we're hopeful that they will be working with us. These are people who work hard, and we're proud of the work that we do. But under the circumstances, given the uncertainty of the state budget, given the uncertainty about state aid, and given the uncertainty about the option that we're gonna be expected to choose as the school department to educate our students, I would recommend that the school committee support the recommendations on list B with the hope that we would be able to bring all those folks back at some point in the near future.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, just for the record, that's for program reorganization?
That is correct.
Okay, do I have a motion? From anyone to approve the Plan B of 34 employees? Is anyone on the school committee?
Mr. Chair, I'll make, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Salvatore makes
36 on that list, on the updated list in here.
36, okay. Mr. Salvatore makes a motion to approve the layoff of list B of 36. Do I have a second by anyone? Last again, folks.
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Fiorello, seconds for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about what's happening at the high school, because I know that some of the teachers are not being laid off at the high school, if that's correct. And if we can just talk about, I mean, we're calling it program reorganization, what that might actually mean, other than just laying off all these
Well, Mr. Fiorello, from my understanding, the high school is, you know, the students there get credit.
Sure.
You know, per the, you know, what happens up there, so there are certain people up there that you need to have for the credit for those, for the high school. I, I can't speak to the rest of it, but
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I would ask Mrs. Dunkinson to jump in. You know, I'm actually glad that that question was asked by Mr. Fiorello, because there was some, you know, I understand that people are emotional because these decisions are affecting them and their profession. I would feel the same way too, and I mean that sincerely. But as Mr. D'Amico just said, this, the, 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 the health, phys ed, music, and art, those teachers at the high school, we, we need those teachers at the high school because those are credit-bearing courses that students need for graduation and beyond, so we would, we are required to ensure that those teachers, that we have teachers to teach those subjects at the high school. Mr. Chairman?
Anyone else have a question or a comment in regards to this before we take a vote? I mean, I would like to say for the members that I had a conversation last night with State Representative James McLaughlin, and he indicated some money was coming to us based on, I believe it was $46 million of federal money that the governor was getting, and that every school district in the state would be getting some of it. He couldn't tell exactly how much money Cumberland was gonna get, but some money was coming out of that pot. But also, I attended a meeting yesterday with the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, and Mr. Pearson, our state senator, was there. And he talked about the budget going forward and the unknowns that are gonna happen for the state to make up a $900 million budget deficit. One of the slides he put up showed that the federal government, if you, if you're a state and you accept federal money, you cannot be lower than the federal guideline for the last three years of what the federal government believes you should have allotted to the schools. The state of Rhode Island allotted $126 million more than necessary. And Mr. Pearson pointed that out because the state is gonna be looking everywhere possible to find a pot of money to help manage this budget deficit. And if we don't vote in the positive tonight, and the state comes back and cuts the town of Cumberland appropriation, that means, and a few years ago, they were able to cut the appropriation to the schools a few years ago, probably maybe 10 years ago, maybe even less, they, they cut the appropriation because the state was in a fiscal mess, and they cut up the appropriation to the town. This could be a double whammy. We don't have the money in place if we need to get busing, cleaning schools, I mean, we've talked about the, the three different scenarios and achievement. And it's expected, the kids are gonna come back sooner than later. I mean, the governor today talked about maybe starting the, you know, the, the grade, you know, do it by grade, you know, by grade level. So the elementary appears to, could be coming back first. Well, a lot of these teachers that are on this B list would have to come back to the classroom because there's no way the school department could put on a full day for these children, as Mr. D'Amico talked about last week. If we don't leave options for the, for us in the town, because we can't go back to the town and say we need another $3 million because of something happened here. I mean, we believe some of these, some of these expenses are gonna be, the state rep, McLaughlin, said to me that they should be reimbursable from the federal government if we're out there trying to clean schools two, three times a day to make, to make the place safe, and other items that he believes is reimbursable. And we can't hamstring the administration. If we don't have jobs or positions for these people next year, we own them. We own every one of them until the following year. And we would be putting the town of Cumberland probably in a position of of bankrupting them in, in a certain way. I mean, I know we budgeted these items right now, but we didn't know what was gonna happen here with the state. Everyone expects us to all go back to school in September, and it would be over. And this is not over by any means of imagination. Who's gonna take the temperature of the kids on the bus? We're walking into school and making sure they have a mask on and, you know, making sure everything is disinfected in those buildings. We need, we need to give the administration some leeway here on how this is gonna work, and I would urge you all to vote yes, and hope that we can call them all back in three weeks or four weeks. As soon as the budget is known for the school district in the town, so we can continue on. Nobody wants to vote to lay off teachers. In eight years, I think I, I voted seven years out of eight to lay off teachers, and at the same time, three of us on the school committee tonight, Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Salvatore, we voted to start the interventionist, when Mrs. Bolio, who had been the chairwoman at the time, got up and implored us to start making changes, and we did, and, you know, we've done it, we've stepped up and brought people into the school district to make it better. But right now, we are in a deep, deep it's, it's hard for us to say, yes, I'm gonna vote. I mean, I'm the spouse of an educator, and I hear it hourly about this, these two layoff lists, and how to move forward, and we really need to reach down deep here and vote yes in regards to this, but, you know, it is your vote. That's why you're elected, and, you know, if there's no one else that has any comments raising their hand or waving or whatever, so I notice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mrs. Waters, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I do have a comment, so I'll try to stay coherent. The list B that's in front of us was asked for a worst-case scenario. The, the worst-case scenario is, is what's been described as far as the state having a shortfall of, I had read $800 million, Mr. D'Amico, you had said $900 million. We receive a little over $20 million from the state towards our budget. List B has $2.5 million. If, if we're to see a great amount of damage done from the state trying to make up for that $800 million if they don't receive federal funds, this $2.5 million is, is a drop in the bucket. For a worst-case scenario, as Mr. Pedro had alluded to earlier in, in his comments, I would expect to see the entire staff laid off if it's truly a worst-case scenario. The worst case is, we have to lay off everybody. We have no money to pay anybody. So to, to see our PE teachers, art, music, library, and nurses targeted for these layoffs without any additional staff as far as, you know, staff who's not directly teaching the students, and I love all of our teachers, I'm, I'm not, you know, saying that, that they shouldn't, you know, should lose their jobs, but it should be an all-or-nothing thing for a worst-case scenario. So those are my views on, on that. I, I honestly, I'm, I'm not done yet. I, I cannot support this. I'm gonna say it right now, I cannot support this, and if we have a 100% distance learning in scenario three, as Mr. D'Amico had outlined for us on Tuesday night, that's what we're doing today, and as, you know, one of the kids had mentioned on their talk, it's working today. They're, they're engaged in their PE classes, they're engaged in their art and music classes. My son's in Mr. Bowser's band class at North Cumberland Middle School, and he goes downstairs and records himself playing, and they're listening to, you know, different jazz pieces and writing thoughtful insights to those jazz pieces. Mrs. Carpenter's motivational videos for PE, which it, it keeps him moving, and it's fun, and it keeps him engaged, and honestly, I know that there are some kids who otherwise would not be engaged in school if it weren't for some of these other classes that they have that they can look forward to. So I'm, I'm just gonna leave it at that, that I'm disappointed, and no disrespect, I just cannot support this. Thanks.
That's fine. You know, that's fine. Alright, if there's no one else, I'll take a roll call vote again, please. So Mrs. Friedman?
I am voting in a good faith effort to to hopefully be able to work some concessions out with administration and the CTA to allow us some flexibility and to save, save some positions. I am voting no against this.
No. Mr. Fiorello?
I, I think this might be the worst vote I've ever had to take in the last eight years. I've been in two or three meetings the past couple of weeks with the State School Board Association, my role as an executive board member, and a couple of districts have actually expressed that they are concerned at this point that they have not laid off enough people before the June 1st deadline, and some of them have laid off over 30. I don't wanna get rid of anybody. I value the arts, and I value all of these teachers very, very much, but the risk is too big for us right now, and we need another three or four weeks of a clearer picture. I would suggest everyone writes to Congress, the state, local, everyone has to get involved and provide us with some money. Until then, though, unfortunately, I have to support these layoffs, so my vote is a yes.
Yes. Mrs. Bernado?
You know, I think it's, I guess, unfair that districts are being forced to make these decisions without having really any sense of what we can expect in the fall by not being given an extension to make these decisions. But I cannot support these layoffs. I know there's a lot of unknowns, and I know there's a lot of risk involved, but I, I just, I can't support the potential of bare bones education for next year, and I have to hope that, you know, in these unprecedented times, when everything is changing at the blink of an eye, every day we hear new stories, things are changing every single day, we, we just, you can't predict it. But I, I just, I cannot justify losing all these people, so that would be a no.
No. Mr. Collins?
I'll keep it short, I'm opposed to this, my vote is no.
No. Thank you. Mr. Salvatore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Mr. Fiorello. I mean, this is probably one of the worst votes in the eight years we've had to take, but I have to support the superintendent. We have, I have to be, you know, fiscally responsible, so I, I vote yes.
Mr. Salvatore votes yes. Mrs. Waters?
I, I vote no. I thought I already voted no, but again, I'll say no.
Great, thank you. And the chair votes yes. I'm sorry, but I have to give the town have to give the town the, uh, the leeway here to to figure out what's going on. I hope the union does, I can say this, I hope the union does come to the table. There is no reason why they need to now because, um, they've achieved their vote here by, you know, they don't need to negotiate if they, if they got this. So with that being said, we have four people vote no to support this and three vote yes. It does not pass. Thank you. Next we have item number B. It's discussion under a vote on the CTA grievance number 2019 slash 2020 dash one. Do we, can, Mr. Adams, are you here? Can we just vote on this?
That's, that's entirely up to you whether you want to have a discussion of it or just have a vote, but you can certainly just take a vote.
Well, well, if someone's amendable, let's make a motion in a second. We can have discussion. Anyone? Hearing none?
This, this is the grievance you heard in exec?
That's correct. So does anyone need to make a motion? Want to make a motion?
Are you, you were breaking up. Can you repeat that? I was having problems with my sound.
We have a motion. Do we have a motion on CTA grievance 2019, 2020 dash one to uphold the superintendent? Hearing none, I'll wait a couple of seconds. And if I hear none, then, um, it will fail for a lack of emotion. Okay. So item number B, discussion under a vote on the CTA grievance number 2019 slash 20 dash one. Fields, because there was no vote, no motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I apologize. I thought I, I thought I was muting here as, as I was looking at the agenda. And Mr. Adams, can, can I, can I make a motion at this point?
The, the committee needs to vote to either
No matter what.
Accept the grievance or deny the grievance or table it.
Yeah, I, I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I'm going to make a motion for a vote of the CTA grievance. Yes.
It would be to uphold the
Uphold the superintendent's recommendation. Yes.
So Mr. Salvatore makes a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a second for discussion? Mrs. Friedman, go ahead.
Second.
Yes.
So we are, we are voting to uphold the superintendent's recommendation.
That's correct.
I want to be sure.
Yes.
Yes, I second that.
So Mrs. Friedman seconds it. Any further discussion? Mr. Collins, unmute yourself. There you go.
So, so just for clarification, a no vote would, would support the teachers' grievance that they filed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. I just looked at some of the legalities of it. I want to make sure. So
The motion on the table.
Okay.
The motion on the table is to uphold the superintendent's handling of this issue.
Okay.
So if you vote yes, that means you're voting to uphold the superintendent's handling of this issue. If you vote no, that means you're doing the opposite.
So can I just, can I mention now, so we, we can get specific about the grievance then, right? We can't obviously name the person, correct?
Uh, no.
Okay. But can we address the issue of the policy that is, uh, under review?
There is no
Question. Well, the question, no, the question, the grievance, the, the policy that's being grieved.
It's contract language, not policy.
So contract language. All right. So I have an issue with the contract language is all I wanted to say.
Okay. Anyone else that have a comment in regards to this matter? So I'll take another roll call vote, please. Mrs. Friedman.
Yay.
Mr. Fiorello.
Nay.
Mrs. Bernado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
No.
Mr. Salvatore.
I vote yay. I uphold the superintendent's recommendation, Mr. Demonic.
Thank you. Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. This item passes five to two. Thank you. Next is item number C, vote, including decision.
Mr. Demonic, before you go to that, I'm sorry. Can I assume that the committee wants me to prepare a decision in accordance with the discussion that we had of this during executive session?
Yes, that's been our normal procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Item number C, vote, including discussion if any. If requested by teacher on teacher A dismissal as described in draft memorandum MOA with the CTA as described by Rhode Island general laws 16 dash 13 dash three and 16 dash 13 dash four. We talked about this in executive session. This is the terminate teacher A with an agreement with the CTA. Voting yes would terminate the teacher, voting no would not terminate the teacher. I need a motion, please.
Mr. Demonic, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Salvatore.
Uphold the superintendent's recommendation.
Make some motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion in regards to this matter? Okay, we'll do another
Mr. Demonic, my apologies again. Sorry to be so interventionist. One thing we discussed was an edit to that memorandum of agreement that I had proposed and talked with you all about during executive session that made clear that the memorandum of agreement was subject to Rhode Island law, which I don't foresee there being any issue with, but it was a small edit that I wanted to make to that MOA. So may I suggest that someone please make a motion to amend the current motion such that that amendment can be made to the MOA itself? If you follow my thinking?
Yes. So Mr. Salvatore, you had made the original motion.
Correct.
You can withdraw that motion and make a, a, a new one with the amendment that the memorandum of understanding would not violate Rhode Island state law. Correct, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chair, I would like, I'd like to take back that, that motion and make another motion with the edits that Mr. Adams had recommended.
Okay, that the item will not violate Rhode Island state law. Do I have a second?
Correct.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. Any further discussion on teacher A? Hearing none, another roll call vote, please. Mrs. Friedman.
So, um, yes, uphold, yes, uphold the superintendent's recommendation.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes.
Mrs. Bernado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Salvatore.
Yes.
Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The passes seven to zero to dismiss teacher A with the corrected language in the memorandum of understanding. Thank you. Item number D. Uh, Mr. Adams, you'll take care of the paperwork on that?
On the dismissal, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Item number D, discussion, the end of a vote, authorizing participation in the buy board for purchases. I need a motion. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to, um, support this. This, this came in front of our fiscal meeting tonight and it passed three to zero. This is a cooperative purchasing corporation which streamlines the purchasing process for schools, municipalities and other public entities. I believe it is recommended. It has been overlooked by the attorney general's office with a thumbs up. And from what I understand, there are other districts and towns and cities participating in this. So I'd like to make a motion in support.
Okay, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Salvatore makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Waters for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
As, as the chairman mentioned earlier, we have been invited to join the buy board for every year since I've been on this committee. Uh, I think it's about time that we finally gotten it done. And I think the town should look at getting involved also because as Tim Duffy of the School Committee Association is fond of saying, the buy board will be able to help districts and municipalities every, with purchasing everything from pencils to fire trucks. So I think it's something that's worthwhile and this is something that we should be doing to try to save the taxpayers some money.
Right. Thank you. So we have item number D of discussion under a vote to authorize and participation in the buy board for purchases. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No one opposed. It passes seven to zero. Thank you. Item number E is discussion, the end of a vote, terminating contract with Sodesco Operations LLC per the contract language. Mr. Adams, we are discussing this tonight, correct?
Uh, that's certainly up to you guys. It's fine to discuss it.
All right. So a little update for our budget to, um, help bring the the budget down. We have, uh, leaving the, if the school committee approves this, Sodesco takes care of the maintenance operation for the Cumberland Public Schools. And if we eliminate their contract, we have to give them a 30 day notice that the savings estimated by the finance manager is about $100,000. He has money in the budget to pay for the supplies that we have to reimburse Sodesco for and any equipment that they may have bought and for the school district since they've been here. And so the business manager believes the savings will be about $100,000. And we will be hiring a new director of operations and not using the employees from Sodesco. So that's what this is about. Item number E, I need a motion for
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
I have made no, you know, I have not hidden the fact that I've been trying to get out of this contract for several years now. I have long believed that it will save us money in the long run. It is not to cast any kind of, uh, dispersion on Sodesco facilities. They have done a great job for us. They've had some good personnel working for us. Uh, this is strictly a fiscal matter to me. And with our joining the buy board, we will be able to buy everything that Sodesco has been providing us, including probably pool chemicals and stuff, stuff, stuff like that through the buy board and continue to save money on, you know, group purchasing. So I would make a motion to well, you know, how, I gotta
Make a motion to approve ending the contract with Sodesco maintenance.
Motion to approve ending the contract.
Second by Mr. Salvatore. Is there any other discussion by school committee members here tonight? Hearing none, um, we'll take a roll call vote because this is ending a contract. Mrs. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Fiorello.
Yes.
Mrs. Bernado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Salvatore.
Yes.
Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. This passes seven to zero. Once the letter is written, it'll be effective, I believe, at 30 days after receipt. We will ask that the school attorney, Mr. Adams, draw that letter up so that we comply with the terms of our contract. Thank you. Next is item number F, discussion under a vote, whether or not what amount Cumberland School Department shall continue to pay the Durham Bus Company. That item is going to be tabled to our next meeting so that our our school attorney can give us some additional advice in regards to that matter. So it'll get tabled to the next meeting. I need a motion to table it to the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Motion by Mr. Waters to table, second by Mr. Salvatore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero. Thank you. Next is personal recommendations. We have a vote on retirements. One non-certified, Mr. Duncanson still here?
I'm here.
All right, go ahead. You're up.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Monique Durkin, paraprofessional at Cumberland High School effective June 30, 2020, after 25 years of service.
Well, thank you. I need a motion by the members to approve the vote on the retirement.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Waters, second by
Mrs. Friedman.
Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero. Mr. Mitchell, can you get the, 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 the bag that we give everyone? And we get it off to the, to the woman.
It would be my pleasure. That's a special bag.
Hey. Thank you.
I would personally like to thank her first.
All right.
Yes.
Next is, uh, we have comments from the public again. Mr. Chandler, uh, do we have anyone from the public? That you can open that would like to speak to the school committee?
Yeah, we have two right now. Uh, first one is Crystal Burgatine.
Okay, Crystal, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? I can't see me. Can you see me?
Yes. Um, well, I have too many people on my screen, so, but we can hear you. So go right ahead. Hold on, we lost you.
All right. How about now?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to start with saying that my mom always told me if I have something bad to say, I should start with something nice. So I'm going to say thank you to those who voted to not lay off the 36 teachers. That's very much appreciated and I think it was the best decision for the Cumberland students. With regard to the comments about the CTA wage increase deferral and possible furloughs, let me just say that you're requesting that the teachers defer their raises or take furloughs to save jobs. And all of that does is kick the can down the road as usual. The town's neglect in properly funding the school should not fall on the teachers' backs again and again and again. There are some teachers that have not even been made whole from the last wage increase deferral in 2010. And here we are asking them to defer again. While I'm glad that you recognize that the hurt should be spread to the G6, why not every single person in the town, police, EMTs, et cetera? Let's also talk about Blackstone Valley Prep. Your mayor, who ran his campaign heavily on his support on public education, sits on the board of this charter school, the very school that bleeds money from the Cumberland School District. Here's an idea. Let's go to the mayor, tell him to find the money. Stop sending Cumberland students to Blackstone Valley Prep. That would be a start. Have them step down from the board of BVP. That would also send a message to the CTA. I also want the public on this call to know that this request came long before anyone even mentioned the word COVID-19. So with B had nothing to do with the teachers not taking a wage increase deferral. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Next one, Mr. Chandler.
Dan Pedro.
Mr. Pedro, go ahead.
Yep, Dan Pedro, 136 Abberon. Um, I just, I want to thank the committee members who voted down the, the layoff. I think, um, I think you decided made a good decision on behalf of our students and I appreciate that. Looking to the future, uh, Mr. Demonic, I think some of the funds you were talking about with the $500,000 in cares money that hopefully, uh, we will be seeing in the next budget year from the state as they actually apply for it if they haven't already. So that should be a $500,000 increase in our budget next year. And as far as the unions go, I think if worst case scenario, something does happen, I think Karen Friedman is right that that is the time where the unions and everybody can come to the table and say, how can we fix this now? Kind of banking on what the worst case scenario might be. So thank you for those of you who, uh, who support our teachers and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Mr. Chandler, is there anyone else? Otherwise we'll end the meeting.
Yep. Madeline Grenier.
All right, we'll take Madeline and that will end the meeting tonight. Thank you. Madeline, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right. Um, Madeline Grenier, 65 Red Gate Road, Cumberland, Rhode Island. I would also like to start by just thanking the people who voted no on the layoffs passing. But I'd also just like to further, um, discuss the fact that music has been brought up, um, in some form onto the cutting board every single year that I've been at CHS and currently a senior. And I think it's really upsetting to just watch something that you love so much. I'm, um, sorry, I'm starting to get a little emotional. I'm going to school school for music therapy next year and, um, it's really upsetting to see something that you love so much be constantly threatened and having to go to school committee meetings four years in a row now, when clef was the main reason that I wanted to go to Cumberland High School to begin with. Um, and I can't imagine getting through high school without being involved in clef in the all-state ensembles I've been able to participate in, in the band that I'm also a part of. Um, and I know my brother in the jazz band as well. I know my brother is also a member of the jazz band up at the high school and he's heavily involved in music. And I wouldn't want to picture him having to go through high school without having that same outlet that everybody should have the option to have. I think music and art are such an important outlet for people to have that it is completely ludicrous to not be budgeting properly in order to make sure that they are still an option. Because it's not like fiscal responsibility is just coming up now. Fiscal responsibility as far as the arts has always been the, um, the main issue, rather. It comes up every single year and it is exhausting to have to keep fighting for something that at this point you would think would be accounted for and should have some sense of security. And I think it's really awful, excuse me, that I'm leaving the high school in a state where music could potentially no longer be there, especially when my brother is going to be a freshman next year. And he might not have that opportunity. I'm sorry.
All right, take your time.
That I was able to have, um, all right, I think that's all I'm going to be able to get out today, but that's really just what I I wanted to say for the most part.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Chandler, that ends the public comments. So we're going to go to school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Collins, you have your hand up. Go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Still getting used to it. Um, I do have one comment. Um, you know, I know it's getting late here, but you know, this whole budget process, obviously this is my first time, but I can, you know, what I can see is we seem to be robbing Peter to pay Paul. And it seems like we're trying to plug gaps the best we can and trying to save positions the best we can. But I, I think somebody, one of the people who presented tonight, one of the public said, we have a revenue issue, not a spending issue. Um, both town and state financial constraints, uh, need to be addressed. But again, this was just alluded to. BVP will see an increase in funding next year. I just wrote some notes down here. We have a projection next year of 421 Cumberland residents slated to attend BVP next year. Which we are on the hook for, well over $3 million plus a lot of state, loss of state aid associated with it. That 421 makes up less than 9%. I actually calculated 8.7% to be exact of all Cumberland students, yet they're facing no reductions in our local aid. Rather, they're actually getting an increase and they're getting another 4 million now in the form of an SBA loan. They do not present achievement, policy or budgets to this committee. We have no oversight, yet we write them a check every year. The town has entered into the partnership with BVP and I feel in theory the town has the ability to walk away from the partnership. Some would say, no, I get that, but at the very least, we should begin a discussion. There's obviously legal ramifications and implications that would have to be, uh, considered as well. We should do what's best for the over 91% of Cumberland students who have seen significant growth and success in recent years. We should continue to grow, not regress. The funding that BVP is slated to receive next year, if it remained where it should in Cumberland, would stop the financial hemorrhage we are facing and all in attendance tonight would be able to breathe a collective sigh of relief. I'm not saying that BVP students should be cut off entirely because they are students there that do well at BVP, they like it there. But we need to begin to have a conversation about BVP as it pres, it is presently constituted. This has been a financial strain on the town for now over a decade. We need to begin this conversation. Now is the time. We as a community need to reevaluate our relationship with Blackstone Valley Prep. We owe it to our students and the families.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Well said. Anyone else have a, uh, comment that, you know, please raise your hand so I can see who wants to have a comment, say something. Um, seeing none, I just want to thank all the members tonight.
Mr. 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 DeMonica, I'm sorry. I, I just had, I had one comment that I, I didn't know.
You got a change from Charlotte to Heidi, so I know.
I, I tried. I'm sorry. I don't know how to do it. It's a quick comment. Um,
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Um, it goes back to our, uh, planning for the future and for September and the task force that is, um, um, being put together. I would just like to ask if, um, uh, Mr. DeMonica and, uh, Mr. Mitchell, if you would consider, um, bringing a facilitator on board for that task force. I know you have, um, several different stakeholders involved. Um, but having a, a facilitator involved, um, might help make the conversation, uh, go smoother. Just wanted to suggest that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I just want to say for the members, I know it's hard, um, voting for layoffs tonight, especially, um, where we're in right now. Took a lot of courage, courage either way, yes or no, and many of these items tonight. So I just want to say thank you and I appreciate it. The, um, you know, you stuck to it, achievement fiscal and everything else, the budget. We're not done yet because we, uh, have to go and find the town council now with the mayor's proposal. And, um, and see what happens there as well. Then we'll have to rectify, um, I should say rectify, reconcile our budget with the town's appropriation as well going forward and, um, I'm hopeful as well that, you know, the other people that did get layoffs on item B, item A, that they're able to get recalled as well. It's, uh, tough that the school department's been put in this position and, um, we're spending as everything we possibly can do, but we also have to set ourselves up for next year as well to, you know, start school again, um, and the year after as well. So with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn unless there's, uh, anyone else to speak tonight. Hearing none, any motion? Motion by Mrs. Waters to adjourn. Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it seven to zero. Thank you everyone tonight, including the audience.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night. Have a good night.
Okay.